Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Tuesday, December twenty second, two thousand and twenty. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one S A subsection four zero three dash A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight six one eight zero zero three zero seven one two. Password seven one two three one nine or via computer at the link provided on our website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at SanfordMaine.org under email citydepartments slash city council. That we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, with liberty, for all.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call. Council Hanselman?
Present.
Council Stackpole?
Present.
Council Tunnel?
Present.
Council Lagan?
He's there.
Present.
There he is. Council Hurley?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Present.
Hi, my name is Tom Cody, Mayor of Sanford. Welcome. Joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his executive assistant, Ms. Larissa Ricketts. Minutes twenty dash two one one dot zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty. We have a motion.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion move a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tunnel?
Yes.
Council Lagan?
Present.
Oh, that's right. And Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries six to zero and twenty dash two 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 dot zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session held on Tuesday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty. We have a motion.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tunnel?
Yes.
Council Lagan was absent that evening, all right?
Yes.
And Council Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor, Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes on that, and that carries six to zero. Our major report, I guess I'll save my comments for the end. Council Subcommittee reports, anything from the subcommittees?
Well, zoning zoning did meet, and we do have some proposals here to listen to tonight, and I think I'll leave it at that. And I will speak to those specifically if there's questions when we get to them in the agenda.
Any other Subcommittee reports? Okay, Steve, I'll turn it over to the City Manager. Oh, I'm sorry, Anne, did you want to add?
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add from Public Safety and folks, in case folks are listening from home, that we did receive a donation of about a thousand face masks from United Way of York County, and if there are nonprofit organizations here in the community that are in need of reusable, washable face masks, they understand are probably better for adults than youth to reach out even to me directly to discuss that needs. I just wanted to share that in particular.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Okay, anything else? If seen, I will turn it over to the City Manager.
All right, thank you. Moment, please. So I'm going to try to abbreviate this as much as possible because it's quite a bit on the agenda for this evening. Starting off, a similar report that was discussed with the Public Safety Committee meeting last week, the COVID nine updates, COVID nineteen updates, face covering ordinance, the city is in compliance with the and in agreeance with the governor's latest executive order, Executive Order nineteen fiscal year two thousand and twenty one, requiring all owners, operators of indoor facilities to include governmental facilities must require face masks for entry and must deny access to any person not wearing a face covering. Medical exemptions are no longer apply. So here are the new elements that was in the governor's order. Those are contained already within our city's ordinance. So there was determined to be no further action necessary as far as the city's ordinance is concerned. Police Department was informed when the governor's order came out. We reviewed the governor's order against the city's ordinance, and they have been doing enforcement since. Chief Conley is here this evening at the meeting. He can comment on that. There's been only, to my knowledge, a single report of incident, reported incident to the police department during this interim period of time. And there has been one enforcement action taking place against the business since this was put in place. Looking at the COVID statistics, this is current through today. Looking at the last forty six days, the top line, it gets rather squished, for lack of a better term, it gets rather compressed, putting it into a small format like this, but this is the number of active cases throughout the state. Currently at eight thousand eight hundred and fifty nine, and in York County, hard to see it here, but sixteen hundred and ninety six. It's, this number has become less meaningful than prior to in Dr. Shaw's weekly presentations. He has asked a lot of questions about this as it's been discussed. The reason this number is becoming less meaningful is that the state has lost its ability to track recoveries. So the recovery, the accuracy of the recovered cases has gone down significantly. So they, when I take the number of new cases that are added to the year-to-date count to the state, that is still very much an active number. In fact, they're reporting out now on the PCR tests as well as the rapid antigen test as being separate numbers. So those numbers are deemed to be accurate and timely. It's the recovery numbers that are subtracted out of that that gives you the net number of cases still remaining in the state that has become far less accurate. But nonetheless, this is indicative of the upward trend, the increasing number of active cases as community spread is indicative across the entire state. The next graph looks at the hospitalizations, the blue line being the current total number of hospitalizations statewide. We currently have seen, we peaked out at one hundred and ninety five back on twelve, twelve thirteen, and it has dropped. Low is one hundred and sixty two, and it's currently, as of today, is at one hundred and seventy. The non ICU beds, there's one hundred and twenty six people across the state occupying a non ICU bed, a non intensive care unit bed. There are currently forty four people occupying an ICU bed and eighteen people on ventilators. It's been pretty steady for quite a period of time. This is a shorter period of time. This only goes back to October twenty second. On that day, you had no people on a ventilator. There was nobody in an ICU bed, and there were seven people hospitalized across the entire state in a non ICU bed for COVID nineteen. So again, the large, large response, if you look at the post Thanksgiving Day, post Thanksgiving Day holiday period of time, that's when you saw the rapid escalation. Continue to talk to us to expect to see something similar to that, again, with Christmas and New Year's coming up. So we expect to see large spikes begin in January. Looking at the the information, this, this graph looks at the total number of cases by zip code. So when I take the Sanford and the Springvale zip code and track those, it's published once a week. We can see back here on October eighteenth, there were two hundred and four combined cases between the two zip codes. And the point nine seven percent references, if you take the two, the two, the population of both Sanford and Springvale and divide that into the two hundred and four cases, at that junction in time, point nine seven percent of the total population had been infected pursuant to either PCR or an antigen test. It currently has spiked as of the last reporting of twelve thirteen. Be a year-to-date count of four hundred and forty six, which is indicative of two point one two percent of the overall population of our community. Any question as far as the trends are concerned? All right, I'll move on to COVID nineteen vaccinations phase one. So I've sent a couple of communications out to the council. This changes on a daily basis. In fact, when I get done the report, you're going to see me drop off camera for a minute because I have to call the fire chief. He has something new to report since we talked earlier at about four thirty this afternoon. I'll report to you what I knew as of that junction in time. So the, the state has pushed vaccination plan phase one A out to the county levels now via the state EMS Director Sam Hurley, big director, Hurley contacted Chief Benati on December fifth over the week, that weekend to indicate that they, that we were being asked. An ask would be coming midweek indicating the state would be developing a plan for distribution and vaccination of the phase one A personnel, which encompasses the licensed EMS providers. Phase one B will address the remaining first responders or firefighters, police officers, and dispatchers, likely using the same system as being developed for phase one A. Hospital systems are to provide vaccinations under phase one, the Pfizer vaccination, starting a week earlier. So that information is a week old. So the Pfizer vaccination started on December fourteenth. Might have seen a lot of reporting on that in the news, our healthcare workers being inoculated as frontline people. As of last Thursday, the Moderna vaccination was approved. That's what's being shipped to us. The Moderna vaccination hit the state of Maine on the twenty first, and one hundred doses have been distributed to the Old Orchard Beach Fire Department. As of today, we're waiting on our shipment to come. So let me get into the plan. The plan that has evolved, this is in conjunction with the state CDC, the York County Emergency Management, and our fire and EMS departments of Sanford, Kennebunk, and Old Orchard Beach. This pertains to the vaccination of the phase one A, one B personnel in York County, in York County only. Each of the counties are putting a plan together such as this, but this is our current plan. The York County Emergency Management Authority has activated their Incident Management Team, so you'll see IMT in here referenced, to assist in the distribution process for the Moderna vaccine to all EMS licensed EMTs and paramedics in York County as part of the one A distribution. County has been split into three sections for the vaccination process, and these three entities, the three entities that are handling a certain amount of each of these people is the Sanford Fire Department, the Kennebunk Fire, Fire and Rescue, and the Old Orchard Beach Fire Rescue. Assist, our own Assistant Chief Arnold is the Branch Section Chief for the operations in the Sanford District, been assigned. Chief Benati has been named as the Operations Section's Chief for York County to oversee all operations in each district. The Emergency Management Team met in a Zoom call on Friday, and the initial draft was presented, amended, and discussed. A final plan should be in place this week. That's my constant reference to it's evolving literally by the hour. At this time, we're looking at approximately six hundred and sixty licensed personnel to be vaccinated using this system, which involves our fire and EMS personnel as well as the other two departments. Sanford Fire has their cold storage system in place with associate, associated electronic data logger attached for monitoring of the vaccine once it arrives. That is a, not different from a normal refrigerator freezer unit. They did have specifications on that. The unit was purchased and is put in place. Sanford Fire personnel will be vaccinated before leaving shift at the end of their rotations, once the vaccine, vaccination process begins. Again, the reference to no date set, we still aren't sure as to what date this week and or next week, we'll receive our shipment to start that process. Reason they're going to be vaccinated before leaving shift is when they, they leave shift, they have days off. So if there is any adverse reaction, which none are anticipated, in fact, I was talking with the chief today, he went, he and staff went to SMHC in the Bitterford campus for further training on this, and of the large number of individuals vaccinated as frontline workers, healthcare workers there, they had seen no adverse reactions to date, other than soreness around the injection site. Let's see, shift personnel, bullet point number nine, the shift personnel are all being trained to deliver the vaccine, but only those who wish to participate will be receiving and giving the vaccine. It's a big need for the public to see that this is important, that all who are offered the vaccine should receive it. I continue to give compliments to Dr. Shaw. He's an incredible communicator. I think it was one, if not two conferences ago, he was talking about not only the efficacy of both the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine, as well as the Johnson and Johnson that is coming. He also talked about the safety of it. So this vaccine is different from prior vaccines in that you are not being given a live or a dead virus. You're, you're, I'd have to open up my notes to get the proper medical terminology, but you're giving a receptor cell. So it's a cell similar to what the, well, identical to what the virus uses in order to attach. That cell is part of the vaccination for which your body responds to develop an immune system to that cell, which ultimately gives you immunity to the virus itself. So item number eleven, there is no cost to receive the vaccine. Part of the federal mandate, that that's to be cut, that cost is to be covered. Item twelve, the emergency management team will work with the vaccination teams to collect all necessary data that is required, as well as health insurance information, which will, which will yield to collecting money to help offset medical supply costs from the vaccination. So that's forty eight dollars and thirty three cents per, for the two dose vaccinations. Some derivation of twelve dollars for the first vaccination and the remaining for the second vaccination administered. We were just informed, so this is, this is a new and positive development, that FEMA will cover the personnel costs for the administration of the vaccine, and this will also be funded through the IMT and County EMA, includes contracted detail rates. So they're going to stand that up and pay us through FEMA as opposed to trying to get that state to bill for the vaccinations and try to get reimbursement through that much longer process. Vaccine will be dispensed in five dose groups of people, because this is how it comes as far as the vials are concerned. Once the vial comes out of refrigeration and is taken out of the package, it's good for six hours once opened. So they have to time up the number of people that they're going to do and plan those doses accordingly. And then SMHC is sponsoring a training session Tuesday, that was actually this morning, for the Operations Section's chiefs to attend, see how they are conducting their vaccination clinics. So I want to give strong recognition to the York County Emergency Management Team, especially to Director Art Cleves, who's positioning York County well in comparison to all other counties. For any of you that don't know Art Cleves and the experiences, I started working with, with Mr. Cleves in Aruska County with the buildup of the Humvee Repair Facilities at Laurin Air Force Base. He then took a federal position, retired from that, and lo and behold, we were fortunate enough here in York County to obtain Mr. Cleves as our Emergency Management Director. So he, he is an incredible individual, and he's largely responsible for a large portion of this design. The next thing I put in here is a public notice. We have been inundated by calls into the fire department, people asking, when can they come to the fire department and get their shot? When can they get their shot? How will they know when they're going to get their shots? Questions such as that. The fire department cannot answer that question because even the state can't answer many of those questions. Dr. Shaw, work around those questions with the media and such, and that is still being determined, is still being amended on a daily basis, largely because the initial number of Pfizer doses that were slated to come into the state of Maine has changed. That, that immediately made changes to the plan. The initial amount of Moderna vaccinations that were coming into state, that changed, the timing of that changed, that shifted that portion of the plan. So without getting into all of those details, it's an ongoing process, not fully defined as far as the multiple phases out there yet. And Dr. Shaw continues to communicate that it's, it's likely into early spring or late spring or early summer, i.e. May or June, before the vaccination is widely accessible to those people in the categories below that of healthcare workers, first responders, long-term care, congregate care facilities, and their associated staff. So we've been given the indication that the state CDC will issue communications on the developing of the vaccination prioritization, the timing and methods of delivery that may or may not include the Sanford Fire Department beyond phase one. If I have to guess, I would say that we will be included beyond phase one because of the need. There is a federal contract that's out with the pharmacies to do the long-term care, the congregate care facilities. Beyond that, it's to the state to work out their, their plan as far as the availability, any, any from a pharmacy to the dentist operations to our EMS and and the trained personnel, it's a large number of people that will be involved in the plan. So, any questions as far as the vaccination, vaccinations are concerned at this?
Steve, I have one quick question. Relative to our discussion at Public Safety regarding the reimbursement with FEMA taking over that payment, is there any negative impact to what we expect from a budget standpoint? Or is that Steve static?
No, I'm, I'm very pleased with that development. You know, I will express it in a public meeting. I was concerned with the first avenue, which was to do the medical billing through the state Medicare system and then track that back to our particular staff time and utilization as far as getting reimbursed for the administrative cost. We're very adept and used to working with FEMA systems for large storm events, natural disasters, and such and that. It's a, it's a very manageable and easily maneuvered system that we're accustomed to. And so we can simply log in our, our time and our rate, our fully burdened rate, be reimbursed accordingly.
Thank you.
Welcome. I'll move on now to the end of the Keep Maine Healthy Grant. The Health Educators wrapped up on December eleventh. They were coming to us through York County Community Action Corporation. YCCAC will keep the complaint line operational. However, there are, if there are enforcement complaints, those will be sent to the police department. Also, complaints against businesses can be made to the state DECD office by online, and I have that here appearing later for the DECD compliance portion, as well as the number that's still live to report face covering violations and such, or you can call nine one one and report it directly that way. Just want to take a moment to thank York County Community Action Corporation for their participation in the Keep Maine Healthy Grant for administration, as well as providing, you know, staffing up, providing the workers. They were exceptionally beneficial, very effective mechanism, and I was very, very pleased for the regional application that was put in for those funds, and it was administered regionally with seven other towns in our immediate region. I think it should, should have been a model for other applications across the state. So thank you to Ian Househeel, who had the lion's share of that work on his table, and to Barbara Kreider, the, the Executive Director at YCAT. The next element, I'll deviate off on COVID now. Housing study, the Land Bank recently commissioned and has now received a preliminary target market analysis for rental housing in Sanford, carrying our market to that of our neighboring towns of Bitterford, Saco, Kennebunkport, Kennebunk, North Berwick, and Kidery. Study is targeted and abbreviated, yet still contains copious amounts of information into the, what they call the seventy one lifestyles, lifestyle clusters that comprise residential occupancy. Such provides much greater insights into the housing rental market where, where and why people are within that market, and identifies key target areas for Sanford around market and workforce housing opportunities. An additional scope is being discussed to add the town of Berwick specifically in there as being in our immediate and competitive region, then to also overlay the data sets for all of York County. Examples of note in there as far as opportunities, so each one of these categories that I referenced, the Bohemian Groove, the digital dependence, the Family Troopers, and the Daring Dream, they're all well-defined categories that comes from the credit rating systems and the credit card companies. They track all of the spending data, all of the transactions, such and that, and these are nationally defined categories, the seventy one lifestyle. So there's a lot of narrative that goes with each of these. So it was a very insightful study and will greatly aid the city in making future determinations as to how best to work, if necessary, to incentivize market and workforce housing development and, and as well as within our comprehensive plan. I think the last element that I have here is solar development. The fifty megawatt project at the airport is, is up and live, started putting into the ISO grid on November sixteenth. Still working with them administratively to resolve the pending maintenance contract on the airport property. Only at this point in time, they believe they have a robotic solution for the off-site properties that they're going to try for the first time. We'll see how that goes. We're still working on that maintenance contract. Other solar development, the Russian Street landfill project has been permitted. It was permitted and designed by Walden Green Energy. They have actually sold that project now. They sold it to Nautilus Solar Energy, who will complete the development and construction, which is pending for this, this spring of two thousand and twenty one. Interconnect permit is there for the twenty megawatt project, so they're going to be building on top of both sides of the Rushton, Rushton Street landfill, as well as they have acquired an adjoining property in order to get land mass enough for a twenty megawatt array there. The former CGA site, the Brownfield site off in New Dam Road, we have taken that CGA site, which is only a seventeen acre site, and combined that with the adjoining ninety three acres of the Main Turnpike Authority land, and that has gone through site plan, site plan approval is pending for that. That is another twenty megawatt project. View this as a major accomplishment as it incorporated Brownfield Assessment and Remediation Funds. We worked with the Maine, Maine Department of Environmental Protection for removal actions under the ABICA to remove the formal industrial waste. We worked with the Army Corps of Engineers and the DEP to amend the Main Turnpike Authority lands, which pre, prior to this, only allowed for foot traffic and flower picking. Now have that largely consumed with a high-valued solar array. So the major wins and all of that negotiation and development. Con Edison is in here. They've been permitted for a four megawatt project off on Route Four. Construction is pending for the spring. NBD Solar is located at eighty-three Airport Road, so this will be on the Big Hill before you get to the airport, coming off of Airport Road. There's a seven and a half megawatt project that's anticipated to go to construction for late, later this summer. And we have two other projects that are currently in the pipeline, various stages, and have at least gone through pre-application processes for the city. Solid waste and recycling, get the information yesterday, not good news. EcoMaine is going to not allow us to renew our current recycling contract, which ends this coming June. Started communications as of yesterday as to what a new plan, design, and options would look like moving forward. They've offered a couple of options to the city, neither of which I find very palatable, but choice is going to be limited. So this will be going to solid waste in the very near future. The fortunate part is it is timely for us, so we can develop solutions early enough to be able to get it into the pending budget development for this year. And the last element is, I have a link in here. Next Century Cities did a year in review, worked with Next Century Cities when we originally announced the intent to build a municipal fiber project during their Next Century Cities fiber conference that was held in Portland, Maine. When we did that announcement, they've continued to track our progress, and we've continued to glean information from them. They put out their year in review in two thousand and twenty, and we had a feature call out in there under Local Leaders Making a Difference. References are forty-five mile municipal network, ten gig capacity, open access, non discriminatory, and it even went down to reference the take rate analysis and ongoing analysis using Uptown and Post Road. A great catch to have a good read in there as far as the city is concerned. That ends my report. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. That was a thorough and comprehensive report this evening. So thank you for that. Questions from the council?
I just want to give credit where credit is due regarding those solar projects. I've been following them quite, quite closely, and we, you know, we've taken some land now that really is not really good for anything, and we're going to turn it into Not really good for anything, uh, and we're going to turn it into not only something that benefits the environment, but also. Uh, increases, uh, the, uh, tax revenue for the city. Uh, I know it's been a long haul, so I, I want to congratulate the city manager Buck and anyone else who, who worked on this. Uh, those of us that are old enough to remember the old Russian street problems with the landfill and, uh. Uh, the water going into the river and, and, uh. Uh, the pumps that we had to install and all that. We had to work through. All those issues, uh, a- as well as clean up the, uh, the, uh, the site, uh, on, uh, on Grammar Road. So, uh, thi- this is, this is, uh, to me anyways, this is really a big deal. So maybe step forward. Uh, and I think it's, uh, they're great projects for the city and, uh, it looks like we're going to see some more, uh, come along. So good work, everybody.
Agreed. Excellent.
Um, just quickly, uh, when I've been getting, uh, Steve made a comment about not calling the fire department to find out when. People are going to get their shots. I have received a few phone calls from people about, well, when is it our turn? And in particular seniors over seventy-four who heard they're the next group. Um, and I, basically what I've been telling them is right now they've worked out, um, a plan for the first responders. And they've worked out a plan for doing the nursing homes that uses CVS and Walgreens as partners. I said, I'm sure they're going to be rolling out a partnership plan of some sort for doing seventy-four and over. Uh, that, that's probably the best answer I can give at this point. I'm trying to pay attention to your communications. Steve, so that I have new information when it becomes available.
Yeah, so I just, I continue to reference Dr. Shaw's is somewhat, this is no, no criticism at all. He's somewhat lost because he doesn't have the information at hand to, to, uh, fully vet and, and push that forward. They just, we're not getting the vaccinations as originally planned. It's, uh, there's been many changes there. So till the state knows that it's going to have an inventory that's being shipped and coming its way. They can't, uh, uh, put the full details of that next phase forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, more questions from the council?
Well, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Okay. Steve, appreciate it. Uh, next up communications presentations tonight, we have, uh, twenty dash ten, two ten. Dash zero one, presentation to the city council, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty audit. Christian A. Smith, CPA, CFP partner with Whipfly, thirty long Creek Drive, South Portland. Welcome. Are you with us, uh, Christian?
I, I am. Thank you.
Excellent. Welcome.
Okay. So yeah, we'll go through the, the slides that I've, I've set up. It's pretty similar presentation to what we've, we've done in, in the prior years. And, um, certainly want to give everybody an overview, um, and understanding of how the audit went. And also to, um, you know, allow you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. Um, so we'll just start going right through the slides and, um, this, this is a really high level overview. Um, there's a lot of information available in the financial statements. Um, I like to start, starting off, just like to start off with making sure people understand the relationship that you have with the audit firm. So we are independent auditors. Uh, we, we do work for the city council. Um, we work with management to perform the audit. And you've hired us to express an opinion on the financial statements, which ultimately are management's responsibility. Um, and so, uh, you know, we're happy to be able to say that we, you know, we did issue what we call an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. On the financial statements for both the city and the school department. Um, you know, which basically means that the financial statements have been, uh, are complete and accurate in an, uh. In accordance with the accounting standards, which are generally accepted accounting principles. Um, so this next slide is just an overview of all the different reports that we issue. So we, we do issue a, um, a set of financial statements for the city. Uh, and the city's financial statements do include the school department as part of it. Um, we issue a separate set of financial statements for the school department as well, just as, as a standalone department. Um, we issue a separate management letter and required communication letter for both the city and the school. Uh, we have to, uh, perform a separate audit of federal grant money. It's called the single audit report. And there's a data collection form that goes along with that. Um, we also issue a, um. A, a, a report to the state auditor. It's called the State of Maine Department of Audit Procedural Form. And that's with regard to the city's audit. Um, we have to issue a separate report to the State of Maine Department of Education. So that's the reconciliation of the, uh, MEDMS upload of financial information to the state of Maine. And we also have to certify whether the school department is in compliance with the Maine School Finance Act. Um, so quite a lot, uh, lot to do. Um, and just kind of a summary of the results of these letters and reports. So, uh, as far as like our management letter, there were, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report for either the city or the school. Um, we did not have any other, uh, letters of recommendation, um, with, with either entity as well. Um, a- as far as our required communications on how the audit goes. There were, there were no changes in accounting principles this year. There were, there were no difficulties in performing the audits. Uh, there were no disagreements with management and no audit adjustments. Um, as well as there were no findings with respect to the federal grants that we tested as part of the single audit. So we do test to the title one program, uh, which is part of the school. So no findings there. Um, and then as the other couple of reports that I mentioned, you know, there, there's no non-compliance with any sort of laws and regulations. As it relates to the state auditor or the state department of education. Go to the next slide. So this next slide really is just kind of an overview of some of the information that's in the financial statements. Um, you know, if, if you were to read through the financial statements, they are rather lengthy. It's about ninety pages long. Um, but the first section, what's called the management's discussion and analysis. It's a nice summary of the results of, of, uh, of the year compared to last year. And so this just kind of gives you some highlights, some bullet points on what some of the key things I think are to, to point out. Um, you know, so within the financial statements, we do present several different basis of accounting. Um, I, you're required to report what's called the accrual basis of accounting, which includes all of your assets. Your, 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 your recently constructed school buildings, your roads, your bridges. Um, all debt obligations and, and on an accrual basis, your, your, basically your equity or your assets exceed liabilities by forty-five point two million. Um, and so that's, you know, that, that's a little different basis of presentation, but you really manage the, uh, the, the city. Based on your fund balances. So your fund balances for all funds, it's, it's slightly different than that number. That's about thirty-seven point seven million. And what makes up that number, the, the, the area that most people focus on is the general fund. So you manage your general operations based on the general fund. And so the general fund balance is a total of nine point four million. And so, uh, there is an, an error here on this slide. It says an increase of twenty-five thousand over the prior year. It's actually six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So total fund balance increased this year by six hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the components of that are that the schools' fund balance increased by seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the city's fund balance actually decreased by a hundred thousand. So that's what makes up that six hundred and five thousand dollar increase. Um, you know, the next bullet really just kind of points out, um, how we got there. So overall, we had very, we had positive, um, variances compared to the budget and revenues and expenditures of about three point five million. Most of that relates to, um. Uh, spending less than budgeted. So the school department spent about one point two million less than budget. Um, a, a large portion of that is you typically have some capital improvement carryover each year. That's about one point four million. That's available to, to go forward. And, um, I've got the public works budget, uh, being underspent by about four hundred thousand dollars. Revenues were pretty flat, about an eighty-eight thousand dollar favorable revenue, um, actual to, to budget. Um, so other, other components that affect that as well. Um, you know, that, you know, you, you plan to use eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of your fund balance for the city. Um, and the school plan to use six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of fund balance. Um, uh, for its operations. And so those, you know. That's, the year ended up as in a positive variant, so we did not end up spending down fund balance, which is very favorable overall. Um, some of the other significant activities that, that we saw this past year. The, uh, the consolidated elementary school construction, um, is, is still ongoing. It, um, it still has about nine point seven remaining and nine point seven million remaining in fund balance. Uh, after spending seventeen million this past year. Um, another new fund this year, there was a six point two million dollars raised for boat construction related to the city. Um, two point eight million of that has been spent, which leaves about three point four million remaining in fund balance to spend going forward. Um, other governmental funds. So there are a lot of other funds within the city, various grant funds. Um, special revenue and capital project funds, those, those total about six point nine million dollars, um, based on that year. Total cash in banks for the city is forty-six million, which decreased by about three million over the prior year. Um, all of your cash is fully collateralized and insured against custodial credit risk. That's, um, important to understand that as well. Uh, so the next series of slides are, are just some bar charts to kind of show you the, the historical trend over the last three years. Um, so this is showing you the total, total fund balance. Um, for the city, which also, which also does include the school. Um, so you can see the committed fund balance is pretty consistent, one year to the next at about a million and a half. Uh, that, that's, that really reflects the, um, you know, the, the amount that's available to be spent for capital improvements. Uh, the assigned fund balance represents mostly your, your utilization of money for next year's budget. So for the twenty twenty-one budget, the, uh, the city has, has allocated eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars again to be spent out of fund balance. School department has, has not allocated anything to be spent out of fund balance. So that's why that, um, assigned number has, has decreased. Uh, the unassigned fund balance, that's, that's basically everything that's left. And, um, the unassigned fund balance for the city and the school, you can see total, the totals about, um. Actually, there was a mistake here as well, too. I, I just realized that in that, uh, total is about six million dollars. So it looks like it's going down eight hundred thousand dollars from the prior year. In actuality, if you look at the, uh, the middle purple bars, almost six million, five million, five point nine million. Um, and, and the bar for, for twenty twenty is also five point nine million. So really actually no, no change in your unassigned fund balance. Uh, the next slide just shows the city by itself. So we've excluded the, uh, the, the school's fund balance. And so you can see here that the, um, you know, the city's fund balance is pretty much remained consistent over the last, uh, three years at around eight million. Uh, so, you know, it, it, this, this, this past year, uh, the city's general fund balance is, you know, approximately eight point one, eight point two million. Next slide is going to show you the trend of the school department. So you can see, you know, as I mentioned before, the school department did have a pretty significant increase in its fund balance this year of about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so you can see where it went from, um, you know, slightly over two hundred thousand dollars last year. And now it's pretty close to a million dollars of, of available fund balance for this. The next couple of slides, I think there's only two or three left. Um, so just kind of looking, where do you stand compared to other communities? Um, you know, I pick these other communities partially based on some of the clients that we do and partially just based on similar size budget, you know, in the eighty million dollar range. Um, so your fund balance as a percentage or your, I'm sorry, your unassigned fund balance as a budget is about seven percent. So it's kind of on the low end compared to some other communities. Um, I know the, uh, you know, the rating agencies usually like to see one month's worth of fund balance in, in unassigned. And that would be about eight percent. Um, but so, you know, generally, you know, people are between, I'd say eight and ten percent is, is pretty, pretty typical. Uh, the next slide I believe is the, it's the debt service slide. I think this is my last, one of my last slides, but definitely the last graphical presentation. But so this is just kind of showing your total debt service, so principal and interest payments as a percentage of your total budget. And you're at fifteen percent, um, which, which at first glance may appear high compared to the other communities. But, um, the important thing to understand with respect to Sanford is that substantially all of your debt service is funded by the state. So once we back off, back out the debt service related to the, to the, uh, technical school and, and the elementary school, your, your fund balance percentage is really rather low. It's probably in the two percent, two to three percent range. So actually, you know, these other communities have more significant debt service because it's not subsidized by the state. So you're actually in a really good position there. My last slide was just usually I like to make mention of if there were any. You know, if there's any new accounting standards that we had to deal with this year and try to explain those or new disclosures. Um, nothing in the prior year and nothing coming up in the next year that we really need to talk about. That's going to be significant to the city. Well, I think, I think that ends my presentation, but so I certainly like to entertain any questions that you might have.
Excellent. Thank you, Christian, for that information. Appreciate it. Uh, questions, council or anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I have a, but, and I'm, I weren't a yes or no kind of answer perhaps, Christian. But, you know, there's, there's co- uh, comments and questions at times that, uh, that council has misappropriated bond funds or otherwise. Would those type of issues, uh, rise to the top in an audit such as this? Um, meaning, you know, we'll often respond to folks, um, that are concerned about our budget and our use of bond funds. Oh gosh, we have this annual audit that's great. We have, uh, you know, excellent, um, report that comes out each year. You know, is that something that, that you're looking at in terms of, um. Bond requirements at all as part of the audit process or not necessarily?
Uh, yeah, no, we definitely will look at the use of bond funds. Those are very, you know, significant projects. And so we, you know, from, from a financial, you know, standpoint, you know, we're looking at it to, you know, we're looking at, um. I'd say a significant. Dollar amount of the transactions related to bond, the spending of bond, bond funds. And determining that, you know, the, the expenditures appear appropriate based on what, what the money was raised for. As well as has, has all of the required, um, you know, approvals and authorization. So we, we do look at those. We, we will, we have looked at all the significant bond, um, fund over the last few years for sure.
And if there was a concern, it would be stated in this report?
Correct. Yeah, we would definitely have a commenter or finding with respect to that.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, just a, a quick question. Uh, I'm just, I'm just going to throw this out in, in general. I, I believe the unexpendanted fund balance, Kristen, was about, uh, seven percent. Is that, is that what you said this year?
Um, yeah, the, the unassigned fund balance, yes, about seven percent.
And, and typically, um, like to see this between eight and ten percent. Is that, uh?
Yeah, that says, yeah, has rule of thumb, that's, that's where most people are. I mean, some communities have like a formal policy or a target.
Yeah.
I'd say, I, I don't believe you have a target, um, like a target unassigned fund balance policy.
Right. So I, this is, this is really my question. Um, then, uh, if, if somebody knows historically, is our fund balance lower? Or is it always been around seven percent or low, low eight percent? I don't know if anybody has those numbers off the top of their head. I.
I, I think it has been pretty consistent at that amount. You've consistently, you've been very steady. Yeah.
About seven percent, yeah. Uh, and that, uh, in general, uh, again, that seems to work for us. I understand the point that, you know, like, like a household, you want to have so much money in the bank. Uh, to pay bills in, in sense of an emergency, uh, but that seems to have worked for us as a, as a community.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, definitely. It's a, it's a balance, balancing issue between how, you know, how much of the taxpayers' money do you want or need to hold for fiscal prudence? And how much, you know, how, how much do you need to or not need to? There, there are some communities that have very high, uh, percentage of fund balance, uh, fund balances. Like I, I haven't, I haven't looked at South Portland this year, but I think they were upwards of like twenty percent. Um, so that, you know, someone could certainly argue that they don't need to retain twenty percent. Um, you know, um, but, you know, the, the rule of thumb really was from the bond rating agencies. They, they like to see a certain amount just as, as a, as a level of health.
And, and as you, as you mentioned, we do like to take around eight hundred thousand. I think you mentioned eight hundred and fifty thousand, uh, out of, uh, undesigned native fund balance to help stabilize the tax rate. Uh, are you seeing any negative implications from us doing that?
No, no, not at all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other questions?
Could, could I make a comment on that though?
Please.
Yeah, so you, you'll note that again this year, uh, that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars was not utilized on the city side of the equation. And that's been the case for quite a number of years at this point in time. My, my larger concern, uh, with the city's operations is the decrease of the three million dollars in. Debt cash position, the amount of time, uh, spent in tracking the city's cash position. Uh, on a, on a monthly basis, timing the, the investments versus the needs of, of outgoing, uh, cash. Is, is, is one of the more difficult pieces of, of managing the, the budget process, uh, budgeted funds. So that is of greater concern to me than, than anything else that I, I've seen in the audit today.
Right. I mean, is that something for you to discuss in the budget cycle or is that more of a fine-tuned, uh, financial conversation for the council to dig into?
Yeah, it, it has to do with what elements are impacting. Yeah, it has to do with what elements are impacting cash and cash flow. So it's the timing of a number of elements that, yeah, I think it warrants a discussion this year in the budgeting process.
Excellent.
The fund balance is part of that.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right, Christian, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And I believe there is an agenda item coming up shortly, but thank you very much for this information.
All right. Thank you, y'all. Stay on until that, below. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. All right. Next up is public participation. Is there anyone here to speak for public participation? There's a hand-raised function on the Zoom if you want to use that or just give me a Scrolling through, I don't see anyone, so we're going to assume there's no public participation this evening. Okay? Next up, public hearings. The city council will take public comment on the following. Twenty-two-zero-seven-zero-one, a public hearing on a proposed amendment of chapter two-eighty zoning regarding signage for medical marijuana production facilities. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor?
Mr. Mayor, would you prefer I hold my comments just informational?
If someone wants to introduce this topic or if that's you, however you want to handle it, Council.
Well, okay, yeah. By way of the background, this was a requested agenda item. It did go to the zoning subcommittee. We discussed it. I think probably, possibly the most controversial aspect of this, besides just allowing the signage in general, is graphics and the concern for what those graphics might look like on the signs. This was sent to, we discussed this initially in zoning subcommittee and pretty much determined at that point, we weren't going to be able to separate out graphics. We did send this to the planning committee, and there was no opposition that came out of the planning committee. It was looked at, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, it was looked at, the graphics issue was at least discussed by our legal services, and we were told we couldn't separate them out, but that represented a freedom of speech issue. But also, there is some state law that limits the types of graphics that are available. The term I've been using is that, similar to the tobacco legislation, as we know, graphics that are harmful to children, those types of things are in place at the state level. So fundamentally, if approved, again, this is first reading, if approved, then this would allow medical marijuana establishments to follow the same signage ordinances that any other business in the city of Sanford could need to follow. So that's it.
Thank you for the introduction. Appreciate it.
Well, and let me also say, there wasn't any opposition to this in the zoning subcommittee moving forward.
City Manager Buck or Director De La Valley, do you want to add anything to this?
No, I think that it was just that Councilor Stackpole covered it thoroughly well.
City Manager has put the background and some of the language up on the screen here. This, as the Councilor Stackpole said, this is the first of two reads, so we'll be hearing this tonight. There'll be a zoning subcommittee meeting between, possibly between now and the next meeting, but maybe not, actually, now that I think about it. So if you do have thoughts or comments about the proposed amendment as it relates to the signs, please reach out to the city council and to a city manager for comment or feedback. So the next meeting scheduled for the first Tuesday in January, when this would be voted on. Okay? Anyone else here to speak either in favor or against? Hearing done. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next up, me guys.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I have a procedural question before you open the public hearing on this next proposal.
Sure.
And that would be, I guess, to the planning director. Since we discussed this in zoning, someone forwarded me a planning agenda. Let me pull it up specifically. So this was an agenda for the planning department for a meeting on November eighteenth. And looking through item number one is in regards to this particular zoning ordinance, and it says that it was sent to planning in response to a request from the city zoning subcommittee. And I've looked through my older agendas. I don't remember that being discussed at zoning. So I'm just wondering about the, and I could be wrong, and my memory is not perfect, and my paperwork, digital paperwork as it is now, is probably not perfect either. But I'm just wondering how this ended up with that comment going to the planning board meeting?
Mr. Care, would you like to respond to that?
Someone with some information is free to respond, sure.
Okay. So I don't know where the reference came to this coming from the zoning subcommittee. It actually came from the Public Safety Committee as relayed. I'm assuming we're talking about the next item, not the marijuana signage.
That's correct.
We're talking, yeah.
That's correct.
This came to me via the Public Safety Committee as relayed by Police Chief Tom Connolly, not the zoning subcommittee.
Okay. And I accept that, I do, but this document does say that it was requested from the city zoning subcommittee. And so, you know, again, such being, things being such as they are, if you, and I'm not even sure if the zoning subcommittee meeting is archived. I was a little befuddled at the meeting and was not sure, you know, where this proposal originated from. And I think that's why somebody forwarded me this information. So I just, you know, I'm just a little concerned about the process here. I do accept what you've stated, and I guess with that, Mr. Mayor will move on.
Thank you. Hold on, let me get us into at least the public hearing, and everyone can then chime in and keep the conversation, particularly the folks at home, so they have a sense of what we're talking about. Do you mind, Council?
Not at all.
Okay, perfect. It took two seconds. So the next up is twenty-two-zero-six-zero-one, a public hearing on a proposed amendment to chapter two-eighty zoning and land use table regarding mental health and abuse clinics. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Or Council Enigan, do you have a clarification? Do you want to write or do you want to wait till after?
I was just asking Director De La Valley, is this in reference to the request on High Street for that? Is that how this, I understand?
No, actually, it came forward to property subcommittee, and I think actually, the city manager could probably speak more specifically to this because he was at that meeting and I was not. But my understanding was that Tim Chaney, CEO and president of Enzo, an outpatient drug treatment provider, approached the property, excuse me, not the property subcommittee, the Public Safety Subcommittee, and requested some assistance to be able to locate, relocate Enzo from the South Sanford area to the, to, I believe, Winter Street. At that point in time, I believe that Chief Connolly was acting in support or spoke in support of the proposal. Tom then brought the situation to my attention after the subcommittee expressed support. And I worked with Jamie Cole, the Director of Code Enforcement, to come up with a fairly simple approach that would allow it. The planning board worked on this, held its public hearing. Tim Chaney came to that hearing and spoke. No one else spoke at the hearing. We prepared the recommendation from the planning board and placed it on the zoning subcommittee agenda. And shortly after that, I was approached by another entity who was considering locating a new facility in Sanford on High Street. I believe it was High Street. I'm not, I didn't really focus too much on where it was. I just knew that what they were proposing was not in compliance with what the amendment was, which was to basically limit the direct distribution of medication from the facility. Enzo does not distribute medication currently nor is planning to. They instead write scripts, and then the clients will take those prescriptions to drugstores or other places where they can be filled. The individual who came forward that spoke to the zoning subcommittee, I did make them aware that zoning subcommittee was going to be working on this. They did come to the zoning subcommittee meeting. They are a new entity to Sanford, not an existing business, and they are, they do directly disperse medication. The amendment in front of you changes the definition of mental health and abuse clinics to specifically indicate that no medication can be distributed from the facility. That's the proposed amendment. So I think that we've got two different entities, one currently located in the city that's talking about relocating to the downtown area, and another one that is not currently operating within the city but is proposing to relocate to an expanded downtown area. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So let's open up the topic. I think you obviously introduced some of it in your response to Council Enigan. Can you just start from the beginning and just provide some context of what it is we're discussing here and the zoning, the change that's necessary?
Let people know what to comment on in the public hearing. We're still in public hearing.
Yeah. How do we do that?
I'll call on you after, if you don't mind, and just let me know and stay who you are, but let's get the topic introduced by Director De La Valley, then I'll open up to the public.
Okay. So I introduced the beginning part of this in responding to Council Enigan's question. The city council's Public Safety Committee met on this topic. Police Chief Connolly was in attendance, as was the city manager. My understanding was that there was unanimous support coming out of that committee to try to do something so that Enzo could relocate to the Winter Street address. I worked with the planning board to prepare a very simple amendment. What it does is it modifies the definition of mental health and abuse clinics to clarify that no medication should be just directly distributed from the facility, and then modify the, proposing to modify the land use table, which would make it clear that mental health and abuse clinics as defined, redefined, if you will, would be a conditional use, would be allowed as a conditional use in the urban zone. It's pretty straightforward. Those are the only two elements of the proposed amendment.
So it's not necessarily?
Oh, I'm sorry. There is a third piece. I'm sorry. As we were reviewing this at the zoning subcommittee, the Director of Code Enforcement pointed out that there is some additional language specifically laying out the conditions under which mental health and abuse clinics would operate. And so I did go back in and modify that language. It actually is, again, a very simple amendment. Essentially, it proposes to add a definition of Lafayette Circle, which is included in the, I believe, chapter one-forty-nine licensing, but it didn't carry over to the zoning ordinance. So I added that. And then when you actually get into the section that lays out the standards or criteria for citing mental health and abuse clinics, there is a, in section two-eighty-dash-thirteen-dash-four-point-one-point-two, it is proposed to be modified to say no clinics may be allowed in Sanford Downtown, Lafayette Circle, and Springvale Village, to indicating that clinics located within those areas could be allowed as a conditional use. And then there's some very, very minor refinement of language further down in the standards to basically just shift from a negative sentence structure to a positive sentence structure that happens in two locations. And then the other change that proposed is in chapter one-forty-nine licensing. And again, it's a really simple change. It basically makes it clear that citing in those sensitive areas can occur as a, it doesn't specifically talk about conditional use because that's in the zoning ordinance, but it basically sets up the stage so that the zoning ordinance can regulate this use as a conditional use. So essentially, what it's saying in chapter one-forty-nine in terms of the amendment is that the issues of suitable areas and suitable conditions would need to be addressed, and that's exactly the sort of thing that a conditional use would do with the planning board.
So just to clarify, though, you've referenced Enzo a few times, but this would not be limited to Enzo. It would be open to any of these companies that are in this business to locate in the urban zone if this was approved.
If it's, as long as they did, under the proposal, as long as they didn't distribute medication directly from the facility.
And the current urban zone does not allow for that proposed style of business?
At all. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this zoning amendment?
Are you asking the public?
Yeah, not yet. Well, are you in favor of it?
I do have some questions, yes.
Okay. So why don't you just let us know who you are, and then you can ask your questions.
You know, and I may be in favor of it. My name is Juliana Tonini. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I have a landlord that I represent out in the urban zone, and we have been approached by the other possible mental abuse clinic, however they do distribute. And that amendment, I can't remember what it is, but the two-eighty in the zoning, that page two-eighty, it says that it is not allowed within a half a mile of a church or a school. Does that still apply if in the new laws, rules?
Director De La Valley, can you comment on that?
Yes, that standard is still in place, and that is an existing standard.
And that's not going to change?
Not proposed to change at this point.
Okay. Okay.
That answer your question?
That answers that question, yeah. I might have something else, but.
Okay. Just please speak up and let me know. There's a lot of people on the Zoom, so just make sure if you have a question, let me know. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak either in favor or against? Right. So I guess with no further questions, I will declare the public hearing closed. Right. I'm sorry, I had to pull the agenda back up here, folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So it kind of came to the council without support of the zoning subcommittee. So I'm curious, was it a first read or were we looking, were we looking to not even bring this back to subcommittee and talk about? I'm very confused on what the.
Are we going to discuss it under agenda?
Hold on. This isn't, this is the first read. It is a new agenda item. We can certainly get into all these sort of questions as far as process when we get there, if you don't mind.
No, I'm sorry. Yes, I skipped ahead.
No, I'm with you on the direction and path it took, so I'm hip. Okay. So consent agenda, any issues or concerns relating to the consent agenda? Hearing done. I would declare the consent agenda approved. Old business, non-new business, twenty-two-sixteen-zero-one, or to accept the annual audit conducted by Whiply for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Do you have a motion?
A move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or any further discussion around the annual audit?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing done, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yeah.
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes.
Every mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, twenty dash two zero four dot zero one, or to receive and to approve a certificate of settlement for outstanding twenty twenty real estate and personal property tax from outgoing tax collector Paula E. Simpson, pursuant to thirty-six M R S A seven sixty-three, along with outstanding lists for all outstanding real estate and property tax, property tax and real estate tax lien. Do you have a motion?
Oh, move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Thank you. Simandra Buck or Treasurer Simpson?
I can speak if you want me to.
Of course.
Um, so um what I need to do is come up with a certificate of settlement, which is part of the backup. Um, the certificate of settlement covers the commitment from twenty twenty, which was committed last August, and I have to do a full reckoning of that. So if you look at that, you see the full um, the real estate and personal property tax commitment of approximately thirty-two point seven million. We had supplemental commitments totaling almost a hundred and fifteen thousand for a grand total of thirty-two thousand, uh thirty-two million point uh eight million, sorry, thirty-two point eight million. Uh, we've received roughly sixteen point five million dollars in, in payments, and we had abatements of about ninety-nine hundred dollars. Once that is all settled up, um, the, the net total of payments were almost sixteen point five million. So currently in principle only, there's sixteen point three million dollars of outstanding real estate and personal property. Um, I also did this with my replacement, Erin McMahon, and she's agreed on this. And we also have other backup to go with this, but this is just a settlement of this as well as outstanding. Then we just supplied the list. We have a list of all outstanding tax liens and all outstanding taxes that are prior year. Everything has been settled up and included with this. So, is there, can you move up the backup? Yeah. So if you look at the tax settlement lien, you have about eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars outstanding as of closing business on Friday. And then on the next slide, should do the, okay, that, that just shows that I wanted to tie into the G L. So that, if you can just bring it up on the, the slides, yep, continue up. And that matches, it's just showing you, it matches. And then if you continue up, and you can go through the slides pretty quick, whoever's doing this. Okay. Yeah, so if you go, yeah, so then every year it, it all has the total. And I just gave the backup to show that the receivables at the G L match that report, so everything matches. So we can then, um, if you don't have any questions with that, um, does anybody have any questions with that?
Yeah.
I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of backup.
Yeah. Thank you for the detail, and of course, uh, it's fully expected. Um, questions for Paula as we sort of manage through this? This is a multi-part process, which you can see from the agenda. Any questions with the numbers and/or the, the process we're using?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I think we're good, Paula.
We're good? Okay, so that will be the end of my settlement. That will relieve me of the personal responsibility to collect this.
What a relief, right?
But you haven't voted yet.
Well, that's true. We, we not let you off the hook. All right. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi? Council Hulahi?
Yes.
Every mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. All right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Could I ask that the, the motion be recognized as being amended to delegate, need the authority to sign on the council's behalf?
Absolutely, so let's um.
So amended, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right, so we're gonna, we'll just do a quick roll call on the vote, the, the amended motion as read by Simandra Buck. Okay, everybody have your microphones on. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, every mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, the, the amended motion carries. Thank you, seven to zero. Okay, in, in conjunction, we have twenty dash two zero five dot zero one, or to authorize the city successor to recommit the balance of the twenty twenty tax commitment to the new tax collector, Erin M. McMahon, excuse me. Um, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right, is Erin with us this evening?
She is.
Yes, I am.
Welcome, how are you?
Good. I'm excited.
Welcome to the city of Sanford. I would look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, so either yourself or, or Paula, do we just want to talk about this, how this wraps up? And or Simandra Buck, do you want to give us a formal introduction? How do you want to handle this?
So this is a recommitment of the uh twenty twenty tax commitment to the new tax collector, Erin M. McMahon. So as you have now approved the settlement statement, uh as was jointly compiled by Paula Simpson, our retiring treasurer tax collector, uh, as well as Erin McMahon, who is now officially appointed as of December twenty-first, and has assumed that roles and responsibilities as the city's treasurer and tax collector. Uh, they have jointly worked with our legal counsel as far as the review of these documents and the requirements contained there, there too. Uh, provided the council accepts this uh by order this evening, the twenty twenty taxes as still outstanding will be committed to Ms. McMahon from this point forward, and she'll assume the responsibilities uh of perfecting their collection.
Perfect. And, and Ms. McMahon, while we have you, do you want to provide just a quick background on where you're coming in from and uh some of your experiences?
Sure. So I've kind of, I've worked for the city of Portland, city of Westburg, so I've done big city, small city. Um, I'm really excited to get back to a smaller city. Um, I think there's more of a overlap of, of people, which makes it um kind of seeming like a big business, you're actually like a municipality, I guess that makes sense. Um, I've done from, kind of from the bottom up, I've done vehicle registrations, I've done, you know, some voting things. I kind of have a mixed bag of things that puts me aligned to to learn more about, you know, the budget things and grant things and, and things like that. So I'm excited to um use my background, but learn some new stuff too.
Excellent. Thank you for that. We appreciate it. Uh, welcome to the team. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle? Losing everybody. Council Tuttle? Council Lanigan?
I'm a yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes.
Every mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Uh, Council Tuttle, you with us?
I am, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Yeah, there you are, okay. And I'm also a yes that carries seven to zero. Welcome to the team, and uh we look forward to uh many years uh under your uh financial leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. I thank Paula for the last month. You're welcome, Erin. Thank you.
All right, well, speaking of thanking Paula, the next item we have tonight is twenty dash two two three dot zero one, a proclamation honoring Treasurer Paul Simpson as she retires from the city of Sanford, Maine. Exemplary service. Do you have a motion?
Oh, move, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded.
Excellent. And, and I have a uh proclamation I'd like to read, if that's okay?
Okay.
Steve, did you want to handle this? Okay, no, I'll take care of it. So, all right, this evening we have a proclamation honoring Paul Simpson, December twenty-second, twenty twenty. Whereas Paul Simpson has served the municipality of Sanford, Maine in various capacities since October nineteenth, nineteen ninety-two. Whereas she also served as the Sanford Treasurer since nineteen ninety-seven, first in the acting capacity and later as appointed. Has also served as tax collector since two thousand eleven. And whereas she has shown exemplary organizational and administrative skills, meticulous attention to detail, and impeccable, impeccable work ethic in all positions she has held, has helped the municipality to maintain rigorous standards in its bookkeeping, and whereas she has trained and supervised many municipal clerks, brought excellent customer service to the residents of Sanford and Springvale. Whereas in her position as treasurer, she has administered several C D B G grants, uh projects for the city of Sanford, including projects in the area of housing, downtown revitalization, economic development, public service, public infrastructure, and micro enterprise assistance. And whereas she is all, she has also administered brownfield grants and tax incremental financing projects for the city. Whereas her exceptional administrative capabilities were recognized in two thousand fourteen by the Maine Department of Economic Development Office of Community Development, who made her a feature, featured administrator on their website and called her a gem of an administrator. And where she was, she will be sorely missed by her colleagues and the city council. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Sanford, Maine, on behalf of the citizens of Sanford, Springvale, is hereby extend our appreciation to Paul Simpson in recognition of a job well done, with our best wishes for a happy retirement. Thank you, Paula. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, my God. Thank you.
Councilor?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
The Council of Tuttle here, I can only reiterate what you said about Paula's years of service. I had mentioned that her father showed me a picture of Paula when she was younger, and she was in the office of uh Roman Hall, the longtime chairman of the Sanford Board of Selectment. Paula, do you remember that picture?
I do. I was three.
You were three, so I, it was meant to be, Mr. Mayor. Paula, we're gonna miss you. Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna miss you, and uh I know that with my wife in retiring, uh, there is something after work, and, and I say, you know what I miss about work? Uh-oh, what a thing.
Paula, would you have to say a few words?
I do, I do. Um, it's been an absolutely wonderful time. I've been a lot of roller coaster riding, through the ups and downs, but I, it has been just an honor serving um the residents of the city of Sanford, which was a town, and now a city, and the village of Springvale. Um, I personally have grown so much and learned so much from many mentors that I have worked with along the way. I've met some wonderful coworkers, and I will miss everyone. It's going to be a definitely uh different way of life for me. I don't know what I'm gonna do with all my time, but I'm sure my uh dance card will fill up soon, but uh, I don't know. It's just I'm ending this chapter, and I don't know what the new chapter will bring, but it's time. And I want to thank you all very much.
Well, you're very welcome, and uh we appreciate everything you've done for the city and, and, and for the, the city hall office. Uh, you're, you're, you're a breath of fresh air down there, and uh we're gonna deeply miss you. So thank you for all you've done.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor.
I'll be seeing you on Wells Beach, I'm sure.
Yes, you will be. Yes. I'll just give you the nod.
There you go. Thank you. All right, anybody else on, on, on behalf of Paula?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I just want to recognize uh Paula Simpson for her exceptional work over the years. Uh, I've worked with, with Paula for a little over eight years now. Um, I know her from her, from her heritage, the, that French heritage. Uh, she, she may be in a, small in stature, but she makes up for it in her influence as far as her administrative skills and capabilities. If, if, if the shoe stomped on the floor, I know I really screwed up and I gotta make, make good on that quickly, but uh, I just want to thank Paula for her exceptional detail uh to the city's finances. Um, and, and Paula, you've been, for me, one of those people that when I come to work each day, I look forward to any time that I have to interact with you in the office and the professional manner in which you conduct your um, uh, your position has just been a ray of sunshine for me, so thank you very much, Paula.
Well, you are so welcome. You're making the time for me, everyone.
You haven't said yes yet, Paula, so you never know.
Right, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
All right. Any final words from anyone? We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and vote. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes, and I shall miss you greatly, Paula.
Well, thank you, Laura.
Every mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, uh, carries seven to zero. Have a great retirement, Paula, and uh I'm sure we'll be seeing you.
Thank you very much.
Love you, Paula.
I love you all.
You and the mayor can go surfing now.
That's right.
Yeah, now I can.
What could go wrong? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have, back to business, I guess, twenty dash two zero eight dot zero one, or to approve and authorize the city manager to execute engineering contract with Gale Associates for the taxiway C rehabilitation project at Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Do you have a motion?
Oh, move, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Right. I'll send you with this.
Good evening, I'm Allison Navia. Yep, I'm the airport manager. Uh, this is the engineering contract for the design, the administration of the project as far as the construction administration, and the full bidding of the project with some grant administration in there as well. So the taxiway project has been on our long-term C I P with F A A, D O T, and with the city for probably about five or six years now, um, and is incorporated into our master plan. So we were able to get uh hold of some discretionary funding because we only obtain a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year through the airport improvement program, so we would need, we'd need to save up for a really long time to be able to get two point two million dollars. So this is gonna be a substantial amount of, this will be discretionary funding from F A A and then also from D O T. We'll obtain that grant, um, and this, this portion of it is just for the, that engineering contract. So this went through the formal process that F A A requires where we get an independent fee estimate from an independent firm who looks at the entire scope of work for the project. They come up with an estimate of what the contract should be for, and then we're mandated to be negotiated within ten percent of that. So we are within ten percent um on the low side, so this is good. Um, and typically the engineering contracts for these types of projects are within twenty to thirty percent of the total construction costs, and we're on the lower end of that as well. Um, so it should be a pretty straightforward project. It'll be very beneficial for the airport. This is our main taxiway, um, our biggest taxiway that goes from the main runway seven two five over to where the fuel and all the services are at the F B L. So this is where a lot of the big jets are taxiing by, um, and it's the, the main connectivity for the airport, and it's in, it's in pretty bad shape when you look through some of these photographs. Um, so desperate need, and we'll be happy to take care of that this coming summer.
Awesome. Okay, do we have any questions, the council? Is this, I, I assume this got funneled through property?
Yes. Yep.
Is that your foot?
That's not my foot, no. It's a little bit bigger foot than mine.
I, I, I'm assuming so.
More, more impressive of a uh crack to demonstrate.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, uh, questions in the council? On this, I would look forward to the improvements. Excellent. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes.
Every mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. All right, uh, next up, twenty dash one ninety-one dot zero one, or to authorize the city manager to enter into your contract with McFarland Johnson for planning, engineering, and consulting services at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Do you have a motion?
Oh, move, Mr. Mayor. Seconded.
Okay, so this one is with our second consulting firm, and this is for um planning level type of work. So the fifteen So, the fifteen thousand dollars will come out of TIF funding since it's to further economic development. And we're particularly gonna be looking on the east side of the airport. So, how to improve the whole terminal area, that parking lot, how to think about the best way to develop the new hangar development that can happen over there, utilities, entrance and exit ways, all of that, as well as any kind of miscellaneous stuff that goes on where I need maps updated and conceptual drawings done. So, this is those general things that we need to keep progress happening over at the airport.
Any questions? Seeing now, we'll do a roll call. Council Henselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henslip?
Yes.
Also a yes, carries seven to zero. Thank you, Allison. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up tonight, we have twenty dash two two five dot zero one, a proclamation honoring Deputy Mayor Joe Henslip for his many years of service to the city council. So, I'm sorry, the city of Sanford, excuse me. Do you have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor. Seconded.
Right, and I also have a nice proclamation on behalf of Joseph R. Henslip. So, proclamation honoring Joseph R. Henslip, December twenty-second, twenty twenty. I gotta make this bigger. Whereas Joe Henslip has served the community of Sanford, Maine in various capacities for over seventeen years. Whereas he has served on the historical committee starting in two thousand and three. Whereas he was appointed in two thousand and five to fill a two-year vacancy on the Sanford Town Council. Whereas he was subsequently elected in two thousand and eight, Town Council, two-year term. Whereas he was then reelected consecutively, servicing and serving in multiple years on the town and city councils. Whereas he has served on the municipal operations and property subcommittee, zoning subcommittee, the economic development subcommittee, negotiation committee, and bank authority. Whereas his fellow counselors elected him to the position of deputy mayor in two thousand and twenty. Whereas his dedication to public service is outstanding. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Sanford, Maine, on behalf of the citizens of Sanford, Springvale, is hereby extend our appreciation to Deputy Mayor Joe Henslip in recognition of his outstanding service to the community. Our very best wishes. Thank you, Joe. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. All I'm gonna fill it is he did serve as the chair of the Town Council for a few years as well. Did you not, Joe?
Did.
You did, yes. So, he was our peerless leader for a little while, and he was good at it. He was good at it.
You wanna say a few words, Joe?
I just want to say that I appreciate the honor that was given me to serve for fifteen years. I learned a great deal. I enjoyed most of it. And I wish you all the best going forward. Sanford, Springvale is a wonderful community, and if we could just continue to get that message out, we will continue to thrive. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
But Joe failed to say, Mr. Mayor, that his years sitting between Anne Marie Mistracchio and myself were his favorite.
They had to duck a lot more.
And bruises on his arms, but they were his favorite years.
Ah, there you go. There you go.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, if I could, say something about my longtime friend, Joe Henslip. There's a quote from Theodore Roosevelt. Are you aware of it, Joe, that that belongs to the person who is actually in the arena?
Yes.
Whose face is marred by dust, sweat, and blood, and knows the great enthusiasms and devotions to duty. And if they win, they gain high achievement. If they fail, at least they fail dearly and greatly. But their place will never be for those cold and timid souls with either victory nor defeat. It's been a pleasure, Joe. Look forward to working with you again in the future. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, John. When you were gonna quote Theodore Roosevelt, I thought I was a little concerned that it might have been his get out and stay out quote. Well, not yet, Joe.
Save that for next time. I wanna thank Joe for again serving as deputy mayor, but also in a very nonofficial role. Joe has been, for whatever reason, the butt of almost every one of my jokes. And he's been a good sport about it. If it's not John, it's Joe. So, gentlemen, thank you for your patience with me on my, I gotta have a delivery, and I gotta have a conclusion to these jokes, and Joe almost always takes the grief for whatever reason.
But John, does that make me a straight man? It does, but just to me, no more chickens, right?
Yeah, no more chickens. Yeah, exactly, counselor. But Joe has always been a great sport, and he never, it's always a delay because he doesn't even see him coming, because I just pick him randomly. I always tend to deliver with a Joe at the end. So, thank you for your good humor, and we've had some laughs. And, you know, you've done it. You've participated in local government and a lot of different levels, whether it's the county or the local, and bail commissioner, you've been on the law enforcement side. You come to the city council, or you came here with a lot of background. But, you know, where I really leaned on you heavily over the years was when things got sticky or complicated from a business perspective, running the meetings. And, boy, where do we navigate the next steps in this conversation? And Joe could always bail us out from a, what do we do next from a professional management of a meeting perspective? Now, if anybody knows Robert's rules and getting us through sort of the navigation of the complications of some of these meetings, it's Joe. So, thank you for that and the ability to lean on you without judgment. That meant a lot, particularly in the early days. So, thank you, and Godspeed. I'm sure you'll find something to fill your time.
You never know.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, next. Best of luck.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Deputy Mayor Henslip has a small package that was dropped on his birthday. If he could, if it's close by and he could just quickly share that with us, yes, please.
My Vanna White isn't too good.
You have to unwrap fast, though.
He saves the paper.
Wow. Better wrapping job than I would have ever done.
Well, Larissa gets the credit for that.
Oh, Larissa.
Oh, packed in pretty tight.
Steve? Steve, can you change the view? Can you change the view so Joe is front and center? Or at least tell Joe to talk and hold it up. We see him first. There you go, Joe.
It's packed in there good and tight. The hockey puck. That's cool. My favorite sport. Oh, wow. It is humpus that is engraved to Joe Henslip with thanks for your dedication, charting a course for Sanford, Maine. How appropriate.
Beautiful.
It is. Thank you all very much. Much appreciated.
We'll miss you, Joe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Joe, thanks for being.
You'll still be involved.
Council Lanigan?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Deputy Mayor Henslip, both personally and professionally. I came in at the ripe age of thirty-six into local government, and he took me right under his wing. And if he knows it or not, he really mentored me, taught me a lot of things. And I'm gonna miss having that around. You continue to learn in this job every year, and his experience and knowledge is just unbelievable. So, I just thank you, Joe, and thanks for just being a good friend. You always picked up the phone whenever I called and had a question, and I just really appreciate the relationship that we had, and I hope you stay in touch.
Thank you, Luke, and I will. And again, thank you to everybody. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you. Naturally, there have been some disagreements. But I will tell you that I never doubted for a second that every action that was taken was within, was with the best interests of Sanford and Springvale in mind.
Awesome. Thank you for that, counselor, deputy mayor, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you in another capacity relatively soon. So, all right, so we do have a motion. We have a second. Council Henselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henslip?
I think I have a conflict of interest, so I'm gonna.
Let it pass this time. How's that?
Yes.
All right, I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, and thank you for having this last meeting be just jam-packed with new business, by the way, everybody. Appreciate it. All right.
Yeah, another one, Mr. Mayor.
Twenty dash two seventeen dot zero one, order to authorize the chief of police to sign a memorandum of understanding for a mutual aid agreement with York County communities. A motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor. Seconded.
Right, who wants to introduce this topic?
I'd be happy to do so.
Please.
This, again, I believe we talked about this briefly at the last council meeting. But this is simply an MOU that allows the departments within York County to assist each other in the, just in cases and incidents where a department loses several officers to the COVID-nineteen issue. So, we wanted to have something particular for that topic. So, this was vetted by all the agencies of the county and several of their attorneys. And this is what came out of that, and I believe our attorney approved it and has no issues. So, if you'd be so kind, it would be something that would help us out in a pinch if we needed it.
Any questions in the council?
No.
Did this run through subcommittee?
Public safety.
I assume that was a favorable response from public safety.
Unanimous.
Okay, perfect. Okay, seeing no further questions or hearing that anyway. Council Henselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
Right, next up is twenty dash two two six dot zero one, order to approve a proposed amendment of chapter two eighty, zoning regarding signage for medical marijuana production facilities, signed must read on two separate occasions. This is the first reading. Anything further on this one?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a quick question for a point of clarification. In the section, I don't know if we can bring up the actual two eighty section on screen. But it references residential. I just want to clarify that we're not allowing signage in our residential facilities, if you will, or where folks are growing residentially. So, that two eighty dash fifty, right at the very top, dash ten point two five, so screening of outdoor cultivation on a residential property, and then it goes on to discuss no exterior evidence of cultivation crosses out, including signs. Is that opening up for signage on residential properties, or is it strictly commercial, if you will? Or can we have that discussed or figured out before the next reading, I guess?
I'd suggest that.
Can you tell me again specifically which section you're referencing?
Oh, sure. See, it's the two eighty dash fifteen dash ten point two point five, where it says it's under the general standards. Yep, got it. So, it starts with the screening of outdoor cultivation on residential property. And I guess my concern is, is this opening up for signage on residential properties? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, Beth, do you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, it's not the intention to do that. I will go back and review that language more carefully to make sure there wasn't an inadvertent opportunity to do that. But no, these are commercial operations, except when they are operated as home occupations. And home occupations have their own restrictions on signage as well. And so, the intention is not to allow signage in residential properties.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor, get some clarification or amended.
Well, is the zoning subcommittee gonna review this one more time? Then maybe they, even if they, I know you're not supposed to have subcommittee, you're not gonna be having subcommittees, but, I mean, we're talking about having second hearings on items that should get, might or might need a subcommittee.
I would suggest that you could table this to the second meeting in January as the city council's first meeting is generally held as being organizational with fewer of these elements on there that would give the subcommittee the opportunity to review the amendments as prepared by Director De La Valley prior to.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
I'll make a.
Someone make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion table to the second meeting in January.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second to table to date. Council Henselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero, so this will be seen the second meeting in January, but also seen by the zoning subcommittee between the first and second meetings. Okay, next up tonight is twenty dash two two seven dot zero one, order to approve a proposed amendment to chapter two eighty, zoning and land use table regarding mental health and abuse clinics. Signed must read on two separate occasions. This is the first reading. Comments, questions?
So, if I can just start things off very quickly, I'm not gonna belabor this. And I think Council Lanigan was going to bring this up right at the end of previous discussion. The thinking of the zoning committee, which again, at this particular meeting was Council Lanigan and myself, was that the council had put the current zoning in place and that we didn't feel comfortable overriding that zoning at a meeting such as it was. So, the decision was to bring this forward to the council for discussion as to whether or not they were in favor of this proposal. So, I'll leave it at that. I know there's probably quite a few people that want to speak on this issue.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? Okay, so this is largely based on the fact that I was there when we did this ordinance. So, in two thousand and twelve, the Sanford Town Council thoughtfully put together an ordinance to address the mental health and abuse clinics within our zoning. Without any specific site under consideration, the Town Council looked at the entire community and determined where we would want to see these facilities available. We took into consideration the desires of the community at the time, which included many who did not want to have the facilities in Sanford at all, and the need to balance other economic development opportunities. If the thoughtfully considered ordinance is to be looked at for the addition of more walkable locations, which was considered at the last time, when we talked about the last time, that was a topic of conversation, then it deserves the same effort put into the process as in two thousand and twelve. We should not back this process into making sure a specific site is allowed. I personally think our existing ordinance is fine. It would not make changes at this time, especially as we start our efforts to redevelop the downtown. But it is something the city council wishes to consider. The process should open with one question. Do we want walkable facilities, and where do we want to encourage them to be located? And the work should start from there, not from the attempt to put one particular site into. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so as we know, this is first of two reads. I, at the very least, would make a recommendation to table this until at least the second meeting in January because I would really, I think the zoning subcommittee needs another set of eyes on this again, to hear from the public again, to view it from the perspective that you just mentioned, Council Hurley. And I would agree with that philosophy. My concern with this is we're reacting to a property that's available. Not necessarily, what's the good of the urban zone, say? So, this is a reactionary kind of situation. So this is a reactionary kind of situation, uh, particularly where it would uproot all of the work, and, and I, I paid attention back then, I watched all those meetings, and there were some contentious conversations in and around this topic in two thousand twelve, and this would just quickly flip that on its side, um, and I, that's unfair to the council then, and I, I wouldn't appreciate that kind of sort of quick thinking, eight years from now, in something we've done. Um, so, you know, I, I think it deserves a further, more thorough analysis. Um, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying it just needs more study.
I remember Jim Galneck and others were able to put, as soon as we made just different decisions, they were able to plot it for us. So we could see what we were looking at, if we're, if we want to talk walkable, we need to do that plotting process. Um, this is coming from, this should be coming from the city council if we want these changes made, and it should be more thoughtfully.
Mr. Mayor, may I just briefly comment? So this, so first, I just want to share that this did come, for whatever reason, to public safety as an initial, very kind of brief conversation, um, some time ago. And I believe it was Council Lanigan and Council Tuttel and I at that meeting, but our, our discussion at that time was not, or my expectation personally, I should say, was that this conversation would come to the council for further discussion and before, I didn't intend or think that it was going to zoning, I guess, it's just what I want to share. And then I, I would really like to see that, um, map and revisit some of the two thousand twelve data and information as a full council, um, so that we have an opportunity just to revisit it as a full council and, and go from there. But I, I agree, I hear Council Hurley what you're saying, and I don't disagree with, um, being really thoughtful about the process, so I don't know if that's tabling or changing the approach, frankly. Um, I, I, I'd rather go to the full council than just zoning.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Hmm? Please.
Uh, yeah, so, um, I, I was at that meeting, uh, with Council Hanselman, and, and I was in agreeance that, um, for what we were discussing, but I also didn't have that assumption, I was, uh, actually taken back a little bit when I saw in zoning the way that I saw it. Um, I don't know if it would be better to table this into a workshop situation where we can start discussing it as a full council, and then determine where it goes from there. Um, sending it back to zoning subcommittee, I think you're gonna get the same exact, uh, results sent back up at the second meeting, just my opinion.
But, you know, one, one thing the zoning subcommittee could advise, though, it doesn't necessarily need to come back, uh, with, you know, no changes, for example, it could be that the zoning subcommittee, um, recommendation is to take it to a workshop.
Okay.
You know what I mean, like, it, it doesn't necessarily have to either die or progress, it, it could certainly be, um, motioned sideways, if you will, and more thorough conversation to occur, that, that, that happens all the time.
I trust the zoning subcommittee to make those choices, I mean, to, to do the process.
All right, thank you.
So we, we, we would, we would need a motion to table, though, before we do that, if anybody's.
And so, and so just, just, just for, for, um, uh, my sake, uh, presumably I'll continue, uh, on, on zoning committee, uh, subcommittee, uh, the consensus I'm hearing is to send it back to zoning for some, some kind of reworking, but that the council wants to be involved in the, uh, final reworkings, if any, uh, in approval of the, the, uh, which of course you would be involved in the final approval of, of the zoning, but, uh, but the, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you don't necessarily want the zoning committee or subcommittee to make this decision and pass it up to you. That's sort of what I'm hearing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Council Hanselman.
Uh, so from my perspective, um, Council Stackpole, I, I guess if it came forward again, I would just want a more detailed presentation that includes some of the materials that Council Hurley referenced from two thousand twelve, or perhaps Larissa could share those in advance, um, in particular, the, you know, some of the map work and so on, um, that would be, you know, something I, I personally would be interested in seeing if it, if it did come back, um, to council, eh, outside of a workshop.
So we, uh, one of the things we did, and this is just an example, but we expanded and contracted, contracted the, the church and school, like, zone, and how far it was away from it, you know, that might open some walkable areas if it was slightly contracted, but, you know, at the same time, I don't love the idea of downtown or gateways being impacted because we're just about to attempt to make an effort on our downtowns. And I want to make sure that, um, we have encouraging investment for our downtowns, that, that wants to be there and doesn't have any roadblocks, so.
And, and I would like to just take note that in two thousand twelve, the addiction crisis was a completely different picture, and probably looked at completely differently, so I think opening it back up to look at it fully, um, maybe we can provide some of those walkable things, but in agreeance to you, more, uh, looking at it very careful.
And can I make a comment on it also when I get a chance?
Sure, go ahead, Chief.
Um, I'm glad that, uh, Council Lanigan said that, because I think that's an extremely important issue here, and I want to make sure that everybody makes a, uh, clear understanding that back in two thousand twelve, that was for a, uh, a drug treatment facility, what, what, what they would call a, a outpatient treatment center, which dispenses methadone. And that was a very big deal back then, and actually, it was, um, you know, I, I, actually, I accidentally, I believe, found out, um, that this, that the original facility was going to be a, an outpatient treatment center dispensing methadone. And that was, um, I forget the name of the, um, of the, um, the first company that came in before Spectrum. Uh, but anyway, um, so there was a specific reason why this was put into a particular area and all the boundaries were created around it, and I think it was a reasonable decision back then, it was better than nothing. But number one, we're not talking about, um, an outpatient treatment center here that dispenses methadone. Um, that's very important, because, um, I think that's what a lot of people have an aversion to, um, when they think about it, they don't understand the, um, the treatment, but still, the, the dispensing of methadone from the location would be, um, um, unsavory to a lot of people. But this is just going to be another, uh, medical building, essentially, where clients will come in and attend group and see counselors and see a doctor and get a prescription. And, 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 and I think we really, really need to have these places where the people are who need the service. And right now, nobody can get down to South Sanford, um, it, it's almost impossible for, uh, people to get down there. And, um, as the councilor said, um, the, um, opioid epidemic back then was, was hardly anything. Most of the clients that were going to be served by this, um, by the original spectrum were going to be coming from out of Sanford, actually. Um, now, we have a significant population in Sanford in the area that, um, have a significant issue with opioid use. Um, and we really need these services available to people to walk to. Um, and one final thing, um, I think it's, it needs to be known that we already have, um, this service provided in Springvale. That Main Behavioral Health Care operates, um, you know, an outpatient, um, program there, um, that includes an intensive outpatient program, and they do the same thing, they see patients and then the doctor will write a prescription and renew that every month. So, and I'm not sure, um, whether Sweetser does the same thing or not, um, but they could very well be seeing people that, that suffer from substance use disorder and are writing prescriptions. So this will really not be that novel or, or that new, because the other two places have been in the city doing this for, uh, at least Main Behavioral Health Care for years, probably at least three to four years. Um, and, you know, times have changed, but I think a discussion, I think if you're gonna change it, then having a, a thorough discussion and getting all the facts would be a good way to do it. Thank you.
This is Tim Cheney, may I, uh, say something? Still on the call with you folks? We have gotten several extensions on this, so I am not sure if you table, table this, whether we will be able to get another extension and push it to the end of January. And so, um, we've been with you for four years now, and we'd like to bring it in town because it's much more accessible, the opioid epidemic has a different face. For every one person in this state we lose to COVID, we're losing one point five three opioid overdoses. And much of the population that we do see at our clinics actually live in the neighborhoods surrounding where we would like to purchase that building. It is an outpatient facility, there is not going to be heavy, heavily populated, provide individual and group and, and intensive group, uh, counseling, and we have an American Board of Addiction Medicine, uh, doctor that does, actually, they don't write prescriptions, they're sent, uh, through, uh, digitally or whatever, electronically, right to the, uh, to the pharmacy, and we actually have a, uh, an arrangement with, uh, Laura Reed, since we've been in Sanford, we have provided eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars worth of free treatment. I have bought two houses out of my own personal savings so that these people have a safe place to live, and I'm afraid that if you table this, we're gonna lose this opportunity. And those people are either gonna be out on the street, or they're gonna be in our program, one of the two.
Mr. Cheney, I, I believe you put a contract on a property that is currently not zoned for the use which you used to, wish to use it for. I'm sorry if you were led to believe that that zone change was gonna be easy, but obviously, you know, once it reaches the city council, we have concerns that we want addressed in a more, um, thoughtful fashion. The council, you know, this is the first time we are hearing it this evening.
But why would that be different than its counseling? Why is that any different than if somebody goes in and has a addictive disorder with a legal substance such as eating or whatever, or sees a physician, this is a healthcare issue, and it's being treated like it's a moral or criminal issue.
Well, now, oh, Mr. Cheney, th- this is a zoning issue, it's not a health issue, this is a zoning question, it's not about the nature of your business, it's about a zone change.
But wasn't that a medical building, uh, before, Mr. Mayor?
I, I, I don't know, I, I assume so, I think, I believe a doctor's office is there, but I've never. But I can't speak intelligently about it. The, the reality of the situation, though, Mr. Cheney, is you're, you're not zoned currently to do your business in that building. So thi- this is the, the, the issue tonight is that this is being brought before, you know, at least half of a city council that has really no background on the request. So it was briefly seen at a subcommittee some months ago, and then took, went to a different subcommittee, which is almost always the problem with these kind of questions, City Manager Buck and, and Director De La Valley, um, that there was not a continuity of the process, and here we are. So, having, you know, a, a somewhat complicated conversation about an issue. So, you know, you got tied up in a, a city process that is not really targeted for expeditious action, particularly when it comes to a zoning change. So we, we've, we've turned away lots and lots of businesses over the years because they were not zoned appropriately, regardless of their type. So I, I, I'm not gonna, you know, agree with you that, you know, we're, we're, we're alienating or providing a stigma to any group of people, so.
That's not what I was actually.
Well, that's what you're done, but I, and I don't appreciate.
No, that was, no, what I was saying is, we're providing a medical service, we're providing counseling, saving lives.
Perfect, we appreciate that, um, tha- that's not, that's not the, the question for this evening. Okay. All right, so, right now, this is a first of two reads, i- if we do nothing else, this will be seen at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table to the, the second meeting in January, so the zoning subcommittee can take another look at it.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, on, on a table motion, uh, Council Hanselman?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, sorry, if we, if we table this, does this count as a first reading or no?
I, I believe it would, yes.
Yes, it would.
Thank you, thank you. All right, yes.
All right, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslop?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, uh, we will see this again at the second meeting in January, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And finally, this evening, Councilor, or Deputy Mayor Hanslop, do you want to take this one?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Cody, and after I read this, I think it will be plain to the citizenry that, uh, Mayor Cody and I have opened up a, uh, mutual admiration society. This is a proclamation honoring Thomas P. Cody, December twenty second, twenty twenty. Whereas Tom Cody was voted as the first elected mayor, Sanford, Maine, Maine's newest city, November twenty thirteen, and, gotta expand this thing. And was sworn into office on January seventh, twenty fourteen. Whereas he was reelected twice more as Sanford's mayor, serving until he reached the limit on terms. Whereas he served as the vice chair, the twenty thirteen twenty-four Budget Committee for the City of Sanford. And whereas he has been appointed to serve on the Board of Directors of the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council each year since twenty fourteen. Whereas he served as chairman for the Municipal Operations and Property Subcommittee of the Council. Whereas he has also served on the Land Bank Authority, the Economic Development Subcommittee, and the Budget Committee each year he was in office. Whereas he has been instrumental in infrastructure, investments, in quality housing, and in supporting public-private partnerships on projects to benefit the community, including the Sanford Airport Solar Project, Sanford Net Fiber, High Speed Broadband Part, Project. And whereas he has dedicated seven years to leading Sanford City Council in building consensus on pivotal issues. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Sanford, Maine, on behalf of the citizens of Sanford and Springvale, do hereby extend our appreciation to Mayor Tom Cody in recognition of a job well done, with our thanks for seven years of excellent leadership. This is offered by the City Council of the Town, the, uh, City of Sanford and Village of Springvale. Much deserved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor Hanslop, and, uh, my lovely wife has walked in here with some kind of thing for me, you know?
Um, open it up, Tom.
He gets my last paycheck, gosh, he's.
Make sure it doesn't bounce.
Yeah, exactly, well, here's a proclamation, so thank you for that, buddy. All right. So, hold on a second. So should I?
Um, it's comments from people that you're blushing, you gotta stop that.
Oh my gosh, I know, should I open this?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
He's blushing because he is, he's afraid it may be a pair of board shorts.
He's known for a few years that Pam's on our side most of the time.
I know, I know, everybody's.
Maura, didn't I hear Pam was gonna run for city council in the upcoming years?
Maybe. I heard school committee, because she's a glutton for punishment.
All right, she was, seems packed up tight. Wow, I guess this is, uh, it's reminding me that we're five minutes behind the bachelorette, by the way, that's what this says.
There you go.
All right, on the back, it says, uh, Tom Cody, Mayor of Sanford, Maine, two thousand fourteen through two thousand twenty, thank you for helping turn the tide for our community, wow, this is beautiful, thank you, everybody, I really appreciate it, it's, uh, that's sort of an article theme, it's, uh, it's beautiful, so, wow, that's, I'm getting pictures taken.
It's a surf's up clock, Tom.
This is amazing, you're high tide, you're right.
More, more importantly than the time, it tells you what the surf is doing, so you can speak out.
Well, finally, something I can use, all right, well, this is, uh, this is incredible, thank you, everybody, and, uh.
Did you tell me that Pam thinks you surf too much?
Yeah, well, I'll suck them.
Yeah, make sure the clock's set right, Tom, she might have set it wrong, so you'll get there and it'll be low tide.
Yeah, and I, I want to thank Larissa, I'm sure she, uh, had her hands all over this thing, so Larissa, I, I don't know if you're, you're got a microphone on, but thank you so much, as always, for, uh.
And, and did quite a bit as well, Tom.
I know, I know, I was getting there, and, you know, and, we, we got, we had a gap, really, uh, for people just running around doing nice things for people. Uh, Ann is the most awful, uh. Uh, Ann is the most thoughtful uh person that that's come along, so thank you, Ann. Hard work and she's been instrumental on a lot of these sort of uh extra effort kind of situations, so thank you. So it's Larissa, um. If if you don't mind, folks, I I do have a few words as always, right? Uh, this is the last time I'll have a microphone in front of me, or or pseudo microphone. Uh, so are you okay with me saying a few words and extending this meeting?
Please.
You're the one wa- wanting to go see The Bachelor.
Uh, so thank you, it's it's an honor and a privilege to get this recognition, um. Now, I'd like to just start by saying, you know, before I was mayor, I was pretty much an unknown in this community. I I was never someone to get involved with organizations or put myself out there in the public eye. Uh, this experience has given me an opportunity to truly learn about our community and the wonderful people who live. Relationships and new friendships that I formed during my time as mayor has made this experience even more meaningful, so thank you for that. During this time, I've been incredibly fortunate to have support of so many people. Uh, obviously, I'd like to thank a few of those folks now, and the problem with thanking people is inevitably you're gonna forget someone. Uh, so if I forget you, I'm sorry, I love you, I I I apologize if I forget anybody. Uh, first, I'd like to start with the City Council. Uh, thank you for your support and collaboration over the years. I must say, over the years, this also means the folks that that maybe aren't here anymore in the City Council, the Alan Walshes, the Freds, the Dicks, um, you know, everybody that that's served in the City Council, uh, Ann, Bob, John, Luke, Moore, Joe. Uh, thank you for all you do and all you continue to do for the city, uh, means a lot. You all brought something unique and special to the table. That's really showed in our collaboration together. Uh, we've accomplished a great deal and had many laughs, like I said, along the way. I'll remember our time together fondly. On those lines, I wanna wish Mayor-elect Hans, uh, Ann Marie Mistracchio, uh, the best of luck. Truly hope she receives the same warm welcome that I did seven years ago. Uh, best of luck, Mayor Mistracchio, uh, you did a great job, sure. Uh, I wanna thank City Manager Steve Buck uh for his tireless commitment to our community. Um, no one works harder than Steve to move this city in a positive direction. Uh, Steve, your your insight and guidance over the years has meant a lot to me. Um, thank you, I mean, honestly, you've been um the absolute person I go to for anything that's that's even remotely complicated and you know, we we've talked through a lot, we've had some laughs, we've had some good times, and uh, thank you for your support over the years. Uh, I wanna thank Executive Assistant, Miss Larissa Ricketts, and of course, Sherry Lord before her. Uh, the day-to-day navigation of all the craziness that occurs in our city hall, um, can get just out of control and uh Larissa and Sherry did a just amazing job managing the day-to-day and getting all this through it. So thank you for the help and support over the years. I wanna thank Jim Nyman, Executive Direct Director of the Sanford Rico's uh, Sanford, I was gonna say the airport, Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, and all the folks who have been on the Growth Council over the years. Uh, we've had some wins, we've had some losses, uh, but we tried our best, uh, stayed positive, so thank you for all you you've done and uh the support you provided me over the years and uh, we, that's a good time. Uh, I wanna thank the many city staff that I had the pleasure of working with these years. Ryan Champlin, Allison Navia, Paul Simpson, of course, uh, Ian Housefield, Amy Cole, uh, Lee Burnett, Randy White, Chief Benati, Chief Conley, uh, Matt Hill, Pete Smith, Brian DeRosa, Alex Hamley, George Green, uh, Pep Delavalle, Sue Cody, Bill Bodding, Stacy Howes. Of course, on the school side, Matt Nelson, uh, David T., the entire school committee. We haven't always agreed on the various issues, but I but I always appreciated the collaborative spirit of our discussions, uh, so thank you for all you do for our city. A bunch of individuals I'd like to thank that um had a direct impact on the city through their contributions, but also uh made a big difference to me personally. Thank publicly recognize Lance Honig for everything he's done for our community, uh, Jim Drummy, uh, Gerard Fuffa Savage, if you know Fuffa, he, Fuffa put out ninety-nine percent of all my signs back in the, back in my first elections, thank you. Rest in peace. Uh, Scott LaVirtu, uh, thank you, Scott, for everything. Uh, Alan and Jonathan Mays, uh, Hazen Carpenter, there there's lots of people in that group that that deserve recognition and I I know I'm gonna miss some, so my apologies. I wanna thank Sean Sullivan and Tammy Wells and now Zandell Bouchard for their honest and and really fair reporting over the years. I wanna thank uh James Harmon, uh, we had a great time getting that film festival off the ground and uh, it was a lot of fun. Uh, Brett Williams, Sarah Schnell, and all the folks from WSSRTV for for making all these broadcasts happen, thank you for everything. I wanna thank my brother Rick. I wanna thank my parents, Marilyn and Phil Cody, for watching all these meetings and being a sounding board for the various topics we discussed. Uh, you know, in the last couple of years, I would go visit with them and we hash out things and I appreciate your perspective, of course, your love and support over the years. Uh, and mostly, I wanna thank my wife Pam and my daughters Sophie and Paige. So uh, Dad missed a lot of uh dinners and basketball games and family events during these seven years, uh, you guys sacrificed the most in this endeavor. So thank you for your patience allowing me to be present in this position. You also had to endure the frequent criticism and attacks on social media. Took the high road every time and didn't engage, it's almost impossible to ignore this kind of noise, but you did it. Meant a lot to me. I appreciate your constant love and support that allowed me the foundation to get through these seven years. Lastly, I wanna thank, wanna say thank you to our city employees who worked every day, work every day, excuse me, to provide the many services we offer in our community. We have employees in every department that contribute to the quality of life we enjoy. So thank you for your contributions, you you truly appreciate it. The good news that with all these people and everybody, you know, focused on doing the right thing, uh, contributions are starting to pay off and gain traction. So if you bear with me, here's a, here's a short list of all of what we all accomplished over the last seven years. So, here's a quick list, we we have launched the largest broadband network in the state's history. We completed the largest solar array in the state's history. On the school side, on the school side, we opened the largest high school and technical center in the state's history. Sanford Performing Arts Center has hosted local and national acts, bringing much needed cultural and entertainment options to our city. We're in the final stages of updating all of the other school buildings in Sanford, which will provide our students and educators with state-of-the-art our facilities from kindergarten all the way to graduation. Sanford's road conditions have dramatically improved this year after voters have approved the road bond for six point two million dollars, allowing us to perform five years' worth of work a single season. Planning has begun in Sanford's downtown. Just a few short years, you can expect sweeping changes to the look and feel of our downtown. Updated roads, beautiful walkways, lighting fixtures, and other pedestrian-friendly services. We have updated all of our city streetlights to energy-efficient LED fixtures. We are working with private developers, as the City Manager referenced tonight, on two new solar arrays, one on the CGA site on New Dam Road and the other on the old landfill on Rushton Street. In the past seven years, we have been fortunate to work with many great business owners who believe in Sanford. Mark Motors opened two new car dealerships on the old Boucher Sprague site. The old Sangin' Ashes Church site became a beautiful senior living facility. York County Community College introduced technical programming in Sanford and has already expanded their offerings. YMCA completed their amazing expansion. Uzzi Seating announced a move of their technology center to Sanford. Most recently, Southern Healthcare and their partners invested thirty-five million dollars in the Sanford campus, Summer Commons, the new state-of-the-art elder care and memory care facility is under construction, looking amazing. Work is complete now on behavioral, work is complete on the new behavioral health wing of the hospital. Uh, and by the way, this expansion brings fifty new jobs to Sanford. Uh, York County, York Hospital built a beautiful new building to provide walk-in care to our residents. After years of neglect, One Eagle Drive, the former U.S. Optical Disc site is now a redevelopment and accepting new businesses. Our airport is now home to Lifeflight and their lifesaving team. Uh, there are many other private developments going on at the airport as I speak, it looks, it looks vastly different than it except just seven years ago. In two thousand nineteen, Hootopia opened its uh full-service Lamping Resort, former Sampon RV Park. Uh, there's also been just a new wave of shops and stores and restaurants that have opened over the last seven years. Proud to say, on the housing front, we've taken down twenty-six substandard buildings and continue our work to ensure everyone in this community has safe housing. At the same time, several new high-quality market rate apartment buildings have been built, we are expecting more for twenty twenty-one. Happy to report that the long-neglected General Lumber Building is now a distant memory. Old Jagger Mill will soon follow suit. So all of this occurred over the last seven years. Uh, during this time, we've nearly doubled our yearly municipal revenue, increasing it by four point five million dollars annually. During the same time period, we got a two hundred and twenty-five million dollars in devaluation to the city. So that's, that's pretty amazing, folks. Um, so despite our many challenges, including COVID nineteen, as we all know, uh, we've experienced a seven-year growth cycle to Sanford. This has been a team effort, we should all be proud of what has been accomplished here. There's still a great deal of work to be done and we are far from perfect, but you can't ignore the changes we've experienced, the momentum we have generated. Uh, I encourage every citizen to promote Sanford proudly, help with this transformation. Positive change and constant improvement are difficult to sustain. These efforts deserve and need your support and attention. So I ran for mayor seven years ago because I wanted to help my hometown find its way. In many ways, it helped me find my way. I'm a better and kinder person for being Sanford's mayor. So this role has helped me in ways I did not anticipate and I will be forever grateful for this experience. I wasn't gonna cry. Uh, with that, it's been an honor and a privilege and uh, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Very well said, Tom.
All right, well, that's that.
I suspect we'll get you in Councilor comments, so continue.
That's all I have, uh, you know, the extension of the evening, so thank you very much and uh, appreciate everybody's, everybody's work and uh collaboration over the years, so thank you. And and for this wonderful gift, it's it's incredible. I'll uh, I'll untie to this one, so. Okay, I believe we have a motion, we have a second on the table. So we'll do.
We do.
Uh, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
If I vote no, do you stay?
No.
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so thank you. All right, Councilmember comments, Council Hanselman?
Yes, thank you, I did wanna say, Mr. Mayor, that I am filled with gratitude for your work in our community, um, and all that you've done, and I I do hope that you join us again, whether on the Budget Committee, uh, hint hint in future years, or in some other uh fashion, once you've um taken some time to to breathe a little bit, but and I also wanna thank you or or blame you either way for my um participation in the council, um, as both you and Pam encouraged me a few years ago, and I and I'm appreciative of that as well, so you will be very missed. Um, I've I've always appreciated your professional and calm approach to running meetings and um being a voice of reason at times for us, so thank you very much, um, outside of that, of course, uh, happy holidays to folks and you know, as always, um, holidays can be, mean different things to different people and I'm just grateful for the folks in our community that are doing what they can to make life a little bit better for their neighbors and uh folks that they see out and about, so thank you for that and enjoy the holidays.
Excellent, thank you for that. Uh, Council Stackpole?
So uh, I guess, Tom, you can either love me or hate me, but in the charter, I'm the one that put the term limit uh piece in there, so.
May love you a little.
Uh, yeah, uh, you don't, you don't have to answer that, you don't have to answer that question. Uh, but uh, I I I do think you get caught up in these leadership positions and it becomes very difficult to get out. Uh, and I mean that affectionately, not uh that that you wanna get out, so I'm sure you have some mixed feelings here uh this evening, that in some ways you're glad this is coming to a conclusion, but also very proud uh of the work that you've done, so uh, you know, that those are all positive things. Uh, it is uh an amazing period of time, it precedes my time on the camp council, uh, the work that was done. Uh, you know, truly, uh, it's uh, I I think the ship has been turned around and is now cruising in the right direction. Uh, and all of us as uh counselors uh have benefited from your leadership. Uh, and uh, we we have the obligation now to keep the ship moving in in the right direction. Uh, and I just bought a new camera, so you'll see me down Wells Beach taking some snapshots of you with a, with a big telephoto lens, but uh, again, tha- tha- thank you, thank you for your time and uh I've enjoyed working on the council with you uh very much, so uh wanna say that, and and Joe, uh, I know we'll uh we'll see each other again and the the uh, hopefully we will, right? If we, hopefully we'll all see each other again sometime in person, but uh, uh, we'll see each other again and we'll work together again. And also, uh, Mr. Mayor, I I hope we have the opportunity to work again also, so uh, as uh Councilor uh Hanselman said, uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas to uh to everyone. Uh, and here's looking forward to a better new year, so.
Absolutely, thank you. Council Tuttle?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I I'd be remiss if I uh I didn't thank you for your years of, you know, of service, uh, uh, you know, no more chickens for a while, Tom, but I've, we've we've got to know each other, uh, we're not only colleagues, but we're friends, Tom, and I can honestly tell you that I think if you hadn't have been elected mayor in this city, I doubt if that former government would have survived. And your your leadership, uh, being the first mayor of Sanford has made all the difference. And Tom, I'm hoping that you run for something again because you have great leadership uh abilities. Whatever you run for, whatever you do, I'll be in your corner, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council, I appreciate that. All right, Council Lanigan?
Yes, um, I just wanna say, um, I have my entire career here, has been serving under your leadership and uh you have set some uh extremely um unbreakable precedence, um. It's not easy to do in the the form of uh mayorship that we have, but you have, you have done it to a T. And you have really shown us going forward how this city can can continue. You've not only uh built with this team and collaboration all this success, but you also have built a sustainable city that should be able to maintain growing and continue to grow going forward, so thank you for that. Um, your your knowledge and expertise and other parts of your life uh brought, brought to the city was uh immensely, you know, irremessible, so thank you so much, I'm getting choked up a little bit, I I really appreciate everything that you've done. I know the sacrifice that you personally, your family, uh, takes in this situation and uh the years uh um that you were our mayor were during their high school years, so I I I can't thank you enough for that. I um, and um, I I look forward to um working with our new mayor and continuing forward uh this, what we have going. Um, Deputy Mayor uh uh Hanslip, again, just, I I'm gonna miss you, I hope to see you around the circuit. Uh, Budget Committee's always looking for people, I don't know if you guys know that, um, I know it's been mentioned, but um, and uh just uh Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year to the city and staff. Um, this city uh Public Works Department, I know it's tough going right now out there, um, after that big storm, but you guys did an amazing job that you had. Uh, thank you for all that you do and all that you guys are putting in, because it's a lot of extra, uh, thanks so much, but.
Thank you, Council Hurley?
Uh, yes, um, sadly, I sit here and I realize I have far more history than I really want. Um, I look, I loo- I'm looking at Joe's years on the City Council and I think of where we started um at the first change charter and the the uphill battle we had as we as we changed from a town meeting form of government into a town council form of government. Um, the the continued budget meetings, but the 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 adjustments that may, that we made that allowed us to to move a little faster than we used to when ordinances used to have to go before town town meeting as well and um, we had so much we dealt with back then and I know the ride we've had, Joe, and you know, the many years, the long meetings, the friendships that get built when you do this job together, no matter what your political differences are, it's amazing um how the conversations bring you closer together because we all have passion for this community, so these years with Joe, um, I don't think anybody can understand some of the stuff that we've been through many, many years, and I'm gonna miss him greatly as a, still glad that I can call him friend because I know I'll still see him friend. And I must say that seven years ago, I am very glad. When I withdrew my papers and chose to instead back our current mayor. Um, I think it was the right decision. I think you've been a great mayor. I think we've had a lot of fun, you and I, over the years, a lot of conversations. Um, I knew from your work on the Budget Committee that you had, um, you cared about Sanford, you wanted to ask for Sanford, you were raising your family here. And I think that says a lot about people when they choose to raise their family here and they come back. And um, they realize what great assets the community has. And what we, you know, what we need to do is just pay attention and to give our heart and soul. Into making it the community, especially the one we, Tom and I remember when we were children. So, Tom, I think you've done an amazing job. I know you're ready to take a break. I know that you're still gonna be involved, as will Pam, because you care a lot. But uh, thank you for all these years. I can't thank you enough for being our first elected mayor. I think. When I set out to do the interim position, I wanted to make sure to start to guide it in the direction it went, and I think you ran with it, and you did an amazing job making it the position. It was always intended to be, so thank you.
Thank you for that. It means a lot. All right, Deputy Mayor Hanslop?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to uh. Thank everybody. Who's either sent emails or left voicemails or sent cards. Who uh showed me love and support when my uh ninety-four-year-old mother passed this month. And uh. Made a difficult time. You all have made a difficult time. Much easier, and I'm grateful for that. Um, um. You have set high bar. I don't think that there is anyone could have done a better job as our first mayor. Um. We're all using a nautical theme tonight, so I'm gonna say that you were in uncharted waters. And you charted them and you avoided the reefs. And uh. You were the ideal person. To be, to be the first mayor. And uh. To bring us. Where we are today and to point us in the direction that we need to go in. So uh. Congratulations on a job well done and thank you, Tom.
Well, thank you, everyone, and I didn't mean to eat up your uh council member comments, but uh. My my whole deal, but thank you. Uh, and everybody's being, I think, very generous uh comments, uh, you know. I I'm just departing and you folks are moving forward, and uh that's that's the important thing. So there's lots of work to do, and I think, and I hope that, you know, you continue the course. Um. You know, I I I've always wanted to take a long-term perspective, maybe to a fault. Or maybe the small stuff got aside in certain ways, but. Um, really wanted to focus on the foundational elements, and we did that. So everything that's been accomplished was a team effort. Um. You know, and and it it goes without saying that none of this really occurs without Steve Buck and. Team that's around him, so City Manager Buck, uh, we're forever grateful and uh. The the hours and the insight and it's all you've done and for me personally, um, but. You know. We've had a great group. I mean, you know, listening to everybody's comments, thank you so much, and and yeah, John, we uh. I do all of you as my friends, and and that's, that's the beginning and the unexpected part of this uh journey is that you meet these great people and. You realize uh that they're a lot like you and uh, you know, we we've had some amazing times and some fun conversations and. Uh, and some, and some rough ones, you know, but you, just like family, you you. Accept it, you move on, you you learn and you grow and uh, you know, you're a better person because of it. So, you know, this has been an amazing experience for me. I there's no regrets, honestly, um. You know, I did what I could. You you can either sit on the couch and sort of complain about everything, or you can. Jump in and get involved and try to help, and uh, I decided to get involved, try to help somewhat blindly. Um, I'm glad I did, and and Bob, uh, the term limits is probably the best idea you ever came up with.
Told you, Bob.
Honestly, I'd say term number three. Was, you know, I'd like to, I've always said this, I thought it was gonna be a marathon, but it was a seven-year sprint. Uh, term number three was like sprint through an obstacle course in the rain with people throwing. It was, it was, this last two years was rough, and twenty twenty. Um. Is not what anybody expected, obviously. It brings out the best in people, it brings out the worst. Uh, when when people get put under pressure, uh. You know, it that that part of it's been been. Inspiring and disappointing at the same time, you know what I mean? So it it's. You know, I I truly hope great things for Sanford. I I know. They will come. I know we've had them in the past, and and I'm fully confident that. Uh, the team that's in place will will get us there, so it's just a matter now of being patient and supportive and uh. You know, we we we've, we've done a lot in seven years, there's no question, and we we've worked some overtime to get it done. So, you know, I I I'm optimistic and hopeful of Sanford's future, and and it's it's not gonna look like it did in the eighties, Council Early. I I think ultimately it's gonna look better, so I I really hope and pray that, you know, we we get there and we get there uh sooner than later. Again, Steve, Larissa, thank you for all you've done, and uh, this is not at all how I imagined my last meeting. I I. I I hopefully never have another Zoom in my life, um. I imagined us all, well, maybe having a drink at the end of the day, and uh, yeah, that's not happening. Um. At least not in a group, so maybe this summer we'll we'll reconnect and.
Right, not right now, Tom, not right now, but.
Not right now. Everybody stay home.
Thank you that much, Tom.
But uh, yeah.
And again, thank you for all the kind words and and the gifts and and everything else, and uh, I appreciate it and. Very well. Wish everybody the best of luck and. See you on the other side.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Formality, perspective, future agenda items, I'm praying everybody doesn't have one.
Nope.
Okay, long meeting, everyone, uh, suitable, I guess, for the end of two thousand twenty. Uh, we'll be in touch and uh have a great Christmas, Happy New Year, and uh to bigger and better things.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Happy New Year.